On formatting that, you'll remember that was an awful lot of text that was contained into that and putting that into ordinance form and what have you is just, it's just time consuming, but I would expect that I'll be bringing that forward to council if not the second meeting in February, the first one in March. Those are the main ones, I think, I think you have pretty much received an update from the past meetings about any other, the status of any other recommendation. That's all I have for right now, unless you have specific questions.
I think that covered a lot, and thank you so much for the work. Like you said, a lot of text to get through. I'm sure it's been an arduous process for putting a lot of these draft resolutions together for us. We've been fairly active on that front and without your help and the help of obviously the city employees involved in this whole process, things like this couldn't get done, for sure. Thank you. I'm gonna open up the floor to anyone who else wants to bring any of the other draft resolutions up or any of the other items as part of the status of any draft resolutions. Alright, seems like we're doing okay, I think. This is a good progress. I'd like to see that this has happened so quickly. It seems pretty relevant, obviously, with the February 2nd coming up so quickly and with the hearing being timed after that. So, if there's nothing else that anybody wants to address as far as draft resolutions go, I think we can move on to our next agenda. Alright, we'll go to agenda number three, discuss and take actions deemed necessary to prepare for the hearing on complaint number 2020-8, including but not limited to notification of witnesses and requesting production of relevant documents. So, this, I think, will be the bulk of our meeting. I want to maybe start with what's changed, what's relevant to our discussion here and now, which would be that we have the option to go into executive session if need be. We have, obviously, the presumption of some changes as far as the requirements for the employees to show up and be present to give testimony as relevant to an ethics review commission's hearing. I want to hear from the commission on their thoughts as to who would be relevant in their mind if we wanted to call any witnesses at all, and what documents might be relevant to ask, to be produced for the hearing.
If I might, before you begin the actual discussion, I didn't want, attached to your pack, of course, is your rules of procedure that you adopted and notification of witnesses to attend is 10 business days before the hearing. If I counted right, Tina, 10 business days before the hearing is tomorrow. So, when we decide tonight, the notifications will have to go out tomorrow for witnesses. And do you want to pull that up for just a second? The rules of procedure, so the commission can be, have that fresh in their minds as they decide which documents they want to see and who they want to attend. So...
You need me to scroll down more?
The part about the witnesses, I think, is a little bit further down. There it is.
The fourth paragraph.
Yeah, if the commission decides to call city witnesses, it must notify them at least 10 working days before the hearing. So... Okay. So, do y'all want to start with the witnesses you deem relevant first and then go to documents?
Yes, I think that would be appropriate. I want to know what the commission thinks as far as relevant witnesses might be. We have suggestions, obviously, from the complaint materials who might be relevant, but I don't want to just start throwing out. We should take some time to consider who would be necessary as far as a request to come with possible enforcement of the requirement for city employees to come.
Mr. Chairman.
What's your head?
There was a list of documents attached to the complaint by the ranger that brought this complaint, Locke. There was a list of people that had submitted documents based on these complaints that where they had reviewed the complaints, they had found the complaints unfounded. I'd like to see a list of that put up so we can all see what those statements were and by whom.
If I may?
Yes, Tina.
Okay, the documents, I don't, I don't know. I'm not sure that what is contained in the documents is anything that really relates to this complaint. The complaint is that Jordan Buckley called Lloyd Locke a racist at a public meeting. So, I think it would seem to me that appropriate witnesses might be some of the people that were in attendance in that meeting as opposed to what, you know, what was in the complaints and what was in the emails, you know, the complaints that people made against either Mr. Locke or other park rangers. I mean, that's really irrelevant, I think. And I could be wrong, I could be wrong. Maybe that is important for us to know, but it seems to me that the gist of the complaint is Ranger Locke being falsely accused by Mr. Buckley of being a racist.
But that was not what we were filing the complaint on. That was not what we agreed on. That was something that was kind of extraneous. We were basically stating that he received these three reports, he got them through a public records request, and even though he had them and had read them, he was still stating as a fact that each one of these complaints was against Officer Locke.
Okay.
And that based upon what those complaints were, it was a logical conclusion that he was a racist even though only one of the complaints was against him.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
And declared unfounded. So...
If you also look at the list of emails that Mr. Locke attached to his defense against this claim, shows that several actions were taken by administrative personnel regarding complaints against Officer Locke. Those complaints are, or the answers or response need to be reviewed.
Chair Garcia?
Yes.
Commissioner Rice has her hand up.
Oh, of course, sorry. I didn't see it there, sorry. Go ahead.
I was gonna wait my turn. I have a question.
Thank you.
Just like we're lucky to have Tina and Michael at our meetings, is there any city staff at the parks meeting?
Anybody's writing anything down for them, recording, keeping order within the meetings?
That's my question, because I haven't yet watched the video I plan on before the hearing, but I was wondering, because that's, that's who I would want.
Yeah, so, so the answer is yes. There's more than one city staff there. I know that former city clerk and now assistant director of Parks Recreation, Jamie Lecase, was in attendance, and I believe there were other city employees there as well. But the video itself of the meeting, the unredacted video is probably one of the documents you'll want to have available to hearing. And so, I don't, you know, it's your choice about whether you want the people who were there to testify versus watching the video, because you'll probably see everything that any witness could testify to by watching the video. But that's up to y'all, right?
That's extremely relevant as far as that point goes, is that if we don't need to call somebody in for something that they're just going to talk about that we can see on this video, we do want to avoid that, especially if it becomes a compulsive issue. I think it's definitely necessary.
Yeah, I'm not suggesting that you refrain from calling a city witness, but some of it might, might be duplicative of what you see in the video, some of it might not, but you might have other questions you might want to ask each other.
Chair Taylor, Commissioner T and Heather Hannah.
Commissioner T.
Yeah, there was a, besides Jamie, at that meeting, there was a gentleman by the name of Jay that I think is in the Parks Department.
Yeah.
That could be, I never quite got his last name, and, and I think he might be a good person in light of all this as a witness, because, you know, he, he reviewed the complaints, he invited complainants to come and talk to him. So, I think he's gonna have, he would have a lot of input into the situation.
Okay. And as far as establishing material fact, that might be a good idea, just to say this is a document that does not have relevance for the person being accused of. I think it makes sense. I mean, it is pretty straightforward to say, oh no, the name's literally not on this document, but there could be other questions that maybe that's right.
And one of the things that he said at the meeting was that he invited some of the complainants to come and talk to him, and they declined, so... He didn't think that there was, that the complaints and their behavior work in companionship with each other.
And what was the, the name of this person?
Jay. Jay, oh, Jay Huffman.
Ah, there, there, okay.
There it is.
Okay. Okay, I mean, I think it's a reasonable person to put forward. What do they, everybody else think of this suggestion? It might be excessive, it might not be enough. I think this is a good start. Looking for hands. Commissioner Rice.
Well, we can really only, at this point, request that the, anybody that's a city employee attend, and the, the other people can request their witnesses as long as they have to do with the situation, so...
And it also might be redundant if we take a look at our relevant documentation.
I would like to see the original complaints and how it was, how, you know, basically the paperwork or the paper trail involved in determining that the complaints were unfounded, not necessarily calling all the witnesses involved with the complaints themselves, but seeing the paper copy or whatever it was that Mr. Buckley had received in his Public Records Act. I want to know what he saw that somehow led him to the conclusion that Officer Locke was racist and that he was able to say, that he was using that as a fact. So, I'd like to see exactly what he received, because if he didn't receive something that specifically stated these were unfounded, then he might be making a deduction based on, well, faulty logic, but still, maybe he didn't have all the information. And again, I'm just playing, I'm playing devil's advocate here, so...
Of course. And it could be relevant. I was gonna ask Mr. Cosentino what your opinion might be on, since this is going to be potentially new ordinance or new changes to our procedures as far as hearing goes. If we were to call a city employee as a witness as comparison to a complainant calling somebody as a witness, did they have the same force of compulsion? Oh, you're muted.
Sorry, I don't know. So, as indicated earlier, the, the ordinance will be approved on second reading, on, I believe, on the second, which requires, you know, cooperation and production of documents. So, the city would be, should, should be in a position to duplicate the same documents that Mr. Buckley received pursuant to his Public Information Act request. So, if that's what you, as, as the commission would like to have produced, then you could just direct that request through, I think, through Ms. Moreno to the city clerk's office, and I believe Lucia Cordova or Liz Trevino in the office would be able to provide the same documents that Mr. Buckley received.
I mean, more specifically, I'll, I'll come back to you, Ms. Moreno. More specifically, if we have a witness that we call and the complainant does, does as well, would it have the same force of the newest ordinance and newest changes that we were discussing happening on, on February 2nd or intended to be happening, potentially on February 2nd, as if the witness was called by just the complainant and not us? Would they have to come in as a city employee?
Oh, I think I understand your question, and maybe not, but let me, let me, let me try. So, if your question was, if, if the request was made only by one of the parties to the proceeding, the complainant, the defendant, and not by this commission, would it have, would it, would it be a violation of the, of the proposed ordinance if the individual failed to comply? And I think the answer to that is no, because the way the ordinance is written, it is that you must, a city official or employee must respond to a request by the commission for the production for witnesses to appear. But, but, you know, if, if the witness shows up, you know, it doesn't make a difference that the right chick is gonna hear the testimony either way, if they appear, so...
Exactly. And, and that's what I wanted to make sure of before we started ruling out people that might be redundant or that we, you know, might want to bring that's already been called, and it might just be that necessary step to not ignore that newfound, yeah.
Yeah, what's different, after the ordinance amendment becomes effective, is that before the, it was solely the burden of the, and it's still the burden of proof of the, the person bringing the complaint to prove up the facts, right? The burden does not lie on the city or, or on the subject of the complaint to disprove it, or on the commission to establish, you know, any, anything one way or the other. It's the complainant's burden. But what's changed now is that, that the commission has a role to play in requesting relevant witnesses to attend and documents to be produced, which is what I recommended and what the council has agreed to so far, so...
Ms. Moreno.
Okay, I want to make sure I'm understanding what Commissioner Walden is requesting. She wants what was given to Mr. Buckley. Now, the items that were attached to your complaint at the last meeting, that's what I understand he requested and was given from his open records request. Now, is she asking for something other than that?
For sure.
What he received, then that's fine, but I would also, I mean, yeah, if he's making, if he's making these statements based upon what he received, then that should be the end of the documents that I would want to see, besides watching the video and then maybe having any of the city employees that were there at the meeting besides the complainant and the defendant, that they were, you know, what, what they said, or what they heard, sorry.
Commissioner Taylor.
But how can, I'm so sorry, how can, how can we guarantee that that's what he received? Is there a way of knowing that?
I can double check, yes.
Okay, cool, thank you.
Commissioner Taylor.
Well, I'm here, here is that this commission is saying it's better to go with the video footage of the actual meeting and stick to the party's end of meeting rather than necessarily calling witnesses to testify and then relying on the presentation of the cases by both the plaintiff and the defendant in this matter, and let the case go far in that, in that way. Is that what I'm understanding?
Oh, sir, I, I believe our intention is to, at least so far, we have two propositions. One, to get a specific person by the name of Jay Huffman to appear as a witness and to have the materials produced that, I think, as my interpretation of Commissioner Walden is, is anything that came with those complaints. So, if there was extra information like a side note or something that was attached to that email or whatever that was relevant, if it's not all in the complaint, have that extra stuff there. That's, that's my understanding of the two requests that we've made so far.
Okay, so, to your, to your knowledge of Mike or Tina, has there been any witness list presented to your office by either the plaintiff or defendant in this case so far? Have they, have they submitted any witness list to you?
I have not received anything.
Nor have I.
Mr. Cosentino, you have your hand up.
Oh, well, I was, I was just going to ask about perhaps the wording of your request, if, if it's your consensus to request all documents that Jordan Buckley received pursuant to his Public Information Act request prior to the September, whatever, the date of the parks board meeting, right? Because those would have been the basis for him asserting or not asserting, right, what he did, right? So, that might be a way, that might be a way to word what you're after, what you're after, so...
Commissioner, Commissioner T, and your name says Tina Moreno, so I'm gonna keep doing that over and over again.
It does.
So, Commissioner T, please.
I just wanted to comment that on his complaint, Ranger Locke did list witnesses. I don't know if that's, if we can consider that to be his witness list, or if he's just telling us people that knows, that has knowledge of this complaint, and Jay Huffman is one person that's on there. But he's got other people listed as well.
I think, at least as far as my understanding of, of what I, is, I want so far and what I think might be a better wording, Mr. Cosentino, for that specific note on what we would want from, for documentation, I think we have already what we've gotten in the complaint form, which would be that open records request information. So, I don't think there would really necessarily need to be that redundant move. I think if there is anything else, I think the complaints that are relevant to the, the complaints, so it's like, our complaint, and then the three complaints that the complainant is alleging is relevant to his claim of racism, I think those would be what we would want. So, if anything was submitted to, as far as documentation or witness testimony or anything that came with those complaints would be relevant if they're not already a part of the complaint that we received. I know it's, it's a bit of a maze, but I'm trying to like, just basically get at, what are we missing from this that would have gotten to the person who received that instead?
Well, I, I think one of your colleagues suggested that if you don't ask, you may not know. So, if you don't ask, if, if, if there are documents that were given to Mr. Buckley that were not included in Mr. Locke's complaint, you won't know that unless you request the city to produce all the documents that Mr. Buckley got pursuant to his request. So, I think that was the concern.
Okay.
But I forgot who said it, but one of you did. Perhaps it was Commissioner Walden, so...
Commissioner Taylor.
Have we obtained those, we obtained those documents that Mr. Buckley asked for? Will those documents be sent to us under separate cover in email for the record being?
Were they attached to the complaint originally?
If we...
What was attached to the complaint is what was provided by Mr. Locke. Now, we don't know, the question is, did we get everything that was given to Buckley is the question.
So, if we request those documents that Buckley requested and obtained those documents, will copies of those documents be sent to us under separate cover so that they can be reviewed by us directly individually? As in an email attachment?
Before the hearing.
Right. Wouldn't we get that before the hearing, or is that something that would just have to be produced by Mr. Cosentino, as far as I understand it?
I think we need to give them to everybody. Physical evidence, physical evidence, documents, photographs, et cetera. It actually says must be submitted 21 days before the hearing to all parties and the ethics review commission. I think there's a little bit more latitude here, because in this case, it'd be the commission itself that's requesting it, right? Right? I'm gonna say that you have a little bit more leeway there, because it's the commission requesting it. So, but you haven't voted yet about what you want produced, but if you do vote and say that you want produced all documents that Jordan Buckley received pursuant to his Public Information Act requests prior to the September parks board meeting in question, then you will get them, and so too will Mr. Locke, Mr. Buckley, and all members of the commission, probably within a matter of less than a day or two, because the city clerk clerk's office will have exactly those documents.
Mr. Cosentino? Oh, I'm sorry?
I was just gonna ask Mr. Cosentino, but I think he just answered the question. I was wondering if we have to request it as an open records request, but it sounds like we don't.
No, you do not.
Good, because we wouldn't have time, right?
Right. Commissioner Walden.
Who is, since this is with two city employees, who is legal representation for either one of them?
No one's been designated so far.
Okay.
Not aware of. I think...
Is that something that needs to be done?
Six o'clock.
I'm just curious, I mean, do either of them need to have?
That's totally, totally up to them.
Okay. Got it. So, it's not something that...
Been required, no.
Would, would you be any helping them, or are you just...
Absolutely not. My role is, is to advise this commission. And again, it is the complainant's burden of proof to prove the allegations in the complaint to the sense this commission.
Okay. Thank you.
And then all parties are on time to discover. That means getting all the necessary documentation and information necessary to prove or disprove the case ahead, including the...
Okay.
Um, so we have at least two ideas, what we might want so far. One is an actual witness and another is documentation. Is there anything else anybody would like to put forward as far as ideas for...
Chair Garcia, just show a couple of hands up.
Yes, I believe one was left up from Commissioner T and, and one was left up from Mr. Rice.
Okay.
Unless there's something else.
Also wanted to remind you on the complaint form itself, there were a couple of witnesses listed. I don't know if y'all are looking at that or not, no longer...
Tina, it might be important to screen share the actual complaint itself, so that the commission can just make sure that the list of witnesses they want to attend and the documents they want produced is complete by the time this meeting is over with.
Commissioner Taylor.
I have to periodically step away from the camera to do breathing exercises because of COVID-19, so I'm gonna be off camera for a few minutes.
Of course, sir. I hope you're feeling okay. So, bringing up the complaint form, I think one of the points that I wanted to make was that it might be redundant, and this is my first point, as far as who we were requesting is part of the witness list submitted by the complainant, but I think it is necessary to then, for us to request the presence of the city employee, because it does then have the, I would just prefer them to come, but it might also be relevant to then call them as our commission to ensure that they do come, instead of having a repeat of what we had last time. Commissioner Rice.
I just wanted to say, because they put witnesses here on the complaint, doesn't necessarily mean that they're gonna ask those witnesses to attend. I think they're just trying to say that these people observed it. I'm not sure. How do you interpret it?
I mean, no, that might be right, because if they just have it as an option for something they want.
Right. Could be. Could be. That we don't know, the grave unknown.
So there's the list, uh, in in the complaint, uh, of witnesses there. It's on the screen at the bottom of your screen.
Make that any sense.
At least I did complain it. That's who he's saying the witnesses would be.
It might be a good idea to call several witnesses just to make sure that at least one of them comes. Things happen. I'd rather have, you know, I'd rather have more than one be there than, you know.
You'll you'll notice that he generically listed, uh, San Marcos Parks Board members, just generally. There's several of them.
And, um, yeah, I I think that's why I wanted to at least, uh, say that as far as my interest goes, uh, Jade Huffman is the only one I think, uh, I feel is absolutely necessary on this on this list so far, unless anybody else had any ideas.
Who are these other people? Do y'all know? Like Drew Wells and Rusty Bryce?
From the emails, it looks like.
So Drew Drew Wells is the director of Parks and Recreation. Um, and, uh, Jamie Lee, uh, uh, Case is the, uh, assistant director.
Oh, okay.
Mm-hmm. Uh, Jade Huffman is is the, I mean.
Uh, Commissioner Taylor, will you? Can you give us a second, guys?
Yes.
Oh, you're totally me. Sorry about that. I'll be right back. My fur children are out of control right now.
I thought that was Commissioner Taylor.
Yeah, I thought he was.
I was a little worried.
He's baby like.
Right? You got all growly on us and stopped.
They were grieving, yes.
That was very, that was priceless there. I'm glad you wanted me.
Yeah.
Very glad that 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 those sounds were not emitting from from you, but, uh.
Oh, my goodness.
My wife is not here. Uh, she's still at work, so I will have to attend at home. I'll try and mute myself when the game's ridiculous.
So Officer Locke, is SMPD not a park ranger?
No, he's park ranger.
Okay, does he? I'm not sure enough with with the the groups. So is SMPD over the purpose? Or is it a completely separate unit with hierarchy?
It's a separate unit with hierarchy.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
Okay, um, and if that's the only consideration, uh, was there anybody else? I mean, do we think it's necessary to have anybody from the San Marcos Park Parks Board be there as a witness?
It might be a good idea, but I wouldn't know who to choose. You just throw out a blanket invitation and go, hey, whichever you want, want to show up at the hearing, you know? Either way.
About their chairperson?
Yeah, I mean, do you just send out it to?
Left.
Whoever that is. Blanket invite or request?
Mr. Cosentino?
So I I guess I guess the, uh, the the consideration for the commission could be what testimony would you want to elicit from one or more Parks Board members? And, uh, is it is is it different than what would be depicted by just watching the video of the meeting? So that might inform your, you know, your discretion.
I agree. I I think that's definitely necessary. Um, that's why at least so far I only have one name that's relevant because it's just something that is outside of the video, something that we might not have. And as well as the documentation that we're requesting, it might be things that are outside of the, uh, open records request that was just not included on the complaint form.
Um, well, we could possibly kill two birds with one stone if we also asked for Jamie Case as a witness because she was at the meeting, plus she was part of the investigation of the complaints.
Yeah. I'm thinking, like I said, I think we should ask more than one just to kind of cover. Um, get the video and then get any of the documents that Mr. Buckley had received in the open records request.
And that that provides a check and balance as well.
Right.
Okay.
And she, I think, I made notes from I watched that meeting and I think Jamie said that she investigated the complaints along with Jade, so maybe we would have the checks and balances, you know?
One of the emails that were attached to the complaint was by Jamie Lee and several others, I think. Chase Dapp had her statement in there. There were several other statements where this had gone to these people for some sort of investigation into these complaints prior to.
Um, and also let me tell y'all too, there was some body cam footage that was discussed in this meeting that, um, Mr., uh, Jordan said he wanted, he asked for, but he didn't get, but he wanted to see it. And I think Jade said, you know, you can come to my office and look at it, or something along those lines. But at that point in September, he didn't have it at the time of the meeting, whether or not he has subsequently got it, I don't know. So we might want to check into that.
But if he didn't receive it, then at the time of the meeting that this occurred, then it's not saying that we could.
Right.
Look at.
Yeah.
We're basing this on what did he see or read or hear that led him to make those comments and use them as fact? So we could fully look at what he had. I mean, am I correct?
I agree.
Okay.
Yeah, and he didn't have that then, so we don't need that.
Okay.
So, uh, my understanding is that we have two, uh, for the list so far, a Huffman and Jamie Lee?
That's what I have now.
Okay. Um.
And then.
Take a second, please.
I'm so sorry. I'm really mad. I'm not used to holding my hand up or I.
Of course.
Uh, um, and of course, Mr. Buckley and Officer Locke will be there, right? Okay, and then they're welcome to bring any of any witnesses that they choose, although they haven't as of yet put in a list. And they have to do that tonight. Is that correct, Tina?
Mr. Cosentino?
Sorry. He's not on my screen.
You're muted, Michael.
Uh, yeah, go back to the rules of procedure that you've adopted. Uh, if you put that back on the screen. So. So the second sentence in that paragraph there, the first sentence is if the commission decides to call witnesses, what it must do. And the next one says if the complainant or the person accused wishes to call city witnesses, they must provide the names to the recording secretary within 10 days before the hearing so that she will have sufficient time to notify the city witnesses.
Right.
So as of this point, um, I mean, we have the complaint by Mr. Locke saying who he thinks the witnesses are. Um, but it's not clear one way or the other whether he, you know, uh, has just asked them, you know, graciously to appear or whether he intends to, you know, go through this process. He may or may not even have a copy of your rules. Uh, procedure. He may not even know that there's a, uh, you know, a a 10-day provision if he wants, you know, uh, to call city witnesses. So anyway.
And then you have your hand up, Mr. Cosentino?
If we've not received any requests, right, Tina, uh, Ms. Moreno?
Um.
From either Mr. Buckley or from Mr. Locke to, uh, to call city witnesses?
I've not any further notices from either one. Uh, I just have the complaint and they're listed on the complaint from Mr. Locke.
So at this point, we don't know whether he's relying on, uh, involuntarily, uh, through some informal notification he's making, uh, or whether he wants, you know, uh, the recording secretary, you, uh, to to notify the submission.
Right, right.
Okay, okay. Um, Commissioner Taylor?
Pardon?
I sounded like you were saying something. Sorry about that.
I I think I think you just got a text from Mr. Locke. Tina, do you see that?
A text or an email?
A chat or something.
Yeah, it just popped up on my screen.
No, hold on.
It was there and I don't see it.
I don't see it.
Uh. Oh, here it is. All right, um, looks like he, I just got it from him and, uh, let let the record reflect. Uh, it says Wednesday, January 27th. Uh, my witnesses and Drew Wells, Jamie Case, Jade Huffman, Rusty Bryce. And he just sent that at 6:14 PM.
Okay.
And apparently he sent, uh, the same email to Ms. Moreno during this meeting at 5:56 PM. So so we have a request now, a a timely request from Lloyd Locke for the for those city witnesses to be present. Drew Wells, Jamie Case, Jade Huffman, Rusty Bryce.
Okay, so do I need to email these, um, rules of procedure to Mr. Buckley?
I would think so.
I wouldn't have that idea.
In fact, Mr. Buckley is entitled to know who the witnesses are that's gonna be called.
Well, he has a, you're right. Well, he has a copy, of course, of the complaint itself, right? So far, so far, this commission has not, it shouldn't be a surprise about any particular witnesses, right? But, uh.
So can there be witnesses show up the day of that we're not aware of?
Sure. Yes, sorry. They could voluntarily without a request from the commission. It's.
Okay.
That was one of my, um, issues. What I wanted to make sure that, um, that Mr. Buckley knew that he had a timeline to meet, uh, for witnesses for you to to request, but like they just said, he could he could ask somebody the day before and we won't know who who's coming, correct? Personal witness of his own?
Um, I guess back to our rules of procedure here.
This is the only second hearing we've had, so, um, this is still learning from here.
Right, and I'm looking at them and it just seems, uh, physical evidence. It doesn't talk about witnesses. It's just documents, photographs, 21 days before the hearing to all parties. So it doesn't say anything about witnesses, uh, 21 days before. It doesn't, but it that's only if you're gonna ask for them, but we don't have the rules about what they can do. But I I still want to know if they can on the day of the hearing pro- produce evidence that we don't have 10 days before.
I'm seeing now, evidence.
Well, it, well, it looked like that if it was a city witness, they had to give the secretary 10 working days. But if it is a non-city witness or non-city employee, then that notice does not have to be given to the secretary. So if it's a non-city employee, then they can, I mean, we wouldn't know. It could just be, you know, some private citizen that either party could call in and we wouldn't have the we have no control of that.
Right.
Voluntarily came, whether it's a character reference or or they were witness to the event or whatever. Am I? Am I reading that correctly?
Mr. Cosentino, have your hand up and also that question.
Oh. I didn't intend to have my hand up. I'm going to lower it. All right, uh, please rephrase it.
Okay. When I'm when I'm looking at the evidence and witnesses, it states clearly that if it's a city witness, so city employee, commission member, whatever, that either party or the commission, that's the commission themselves, have to give 10 working days to the secretary with list of that, of those witnesses to request them to be there. But if it is a non-city employee, that circumvents that 10 working days. Because the rules of procedure specifically states city witnesses.
Right.
So it could be somebody could come from either party's request voluntarily, not be a city employee, and that's still okay.
Right. I I agree with your your reading of that.
Okay, I'm just trying to get some clarification. I just want to make sure that I'm understanding that.
But but can I ask another question? But I the we the section is evidence and witnesses. But that has to do with witnesses that are city city employees. But what kind of rules do we have about physical evidence prior to the, um, hearing? Is there any kind of rule?
The very first line?
Just brings it to the day of?
Oh, yeah, it happened.
Very first line, right? Must be submitted by at least 21 days for the hearing. All parties and every commission.
So in other words, the evidence that we have now is the only evidence that they can bring, correct?
Mr. Cosentino, is that a reasonable interpretation of our rules of procedure?
It it's a reasonable interpretation of your procedure, but as I stated earlier, I think that is that's the way that it's worded. It's binding on the the complainant and the subject of the complaint, but the commission, uh, can, uh, you know, it's not binding on the commission. That's why you're able today. You haven't done it yet, but you can, uh, today decide what documents you want produced.
So the day of the hearing, there can be no other physical evidence, um, provided by anyone?
That's what it says.
Okay.
Oh, and then not in those exact words, but that's the effect of it. If if it wasn't provided to the commission and to all parties 21 days in advance, then it doesn't come in.
Okay.
And, um, they're not given this, um, our rules of procedure when they, uh, when the complaint is then deemed to go forward. They didn't get this.
No.
From us, at least. They could have looked it up themselves if they wanted to know, but they didn't get it from us, like physically.
It's on the website.
Okay.
I'm not sure how problematic that would be if everybody involved hadn't been informed on that date that we had stated we're having this hearing on February 11th. Sorry, I don't have my calendar up. So you must get any further evidence submitted to us now. I'm concerned if that was not made clearly, that that may be problematic particularly for the defendant.
Uh, and would it be reasonable that, given this knowledge, that we could push the hearing because of that as a consideration? That because they didn't have this information, there's no rea- there's no way they had any of the physical evidence that the defense was going to rely on? At least that's my consideration.
I, I don't know. But then again, we're basing it solely on the information. He made comment, if we are sticking with it, he made comments based on information he received for a public records request, and that was it. Nothing extra. Now, I don't know what else anybody would wanna bring that would make this even further, because Officer Locke already put down his evidence supporting why he did the complaint. So, I don't know if it'd be reasonable to move it or not. Again, I'm sorry, I kinda just threw that grenade in the room. I apologize.
Thank you so much for pointing it out. Uh, that is the ethical implications of our, our actions. It's completely relevant. Sure.
I know at the, um, January twelfth meeting, I mentioned the twenty-one day and the ten day. And then that's when the eleventh date was picked.
Okay, then, then that's, and ever, and they were both there for that particular meeting, so then.
Was that statement made?
In public or in executive?
Or in executive session?
Uh, it was not in open session.
So, so they don't know?
I don't know. Okay. Um, I want to consider, uh, I, I don't know if we can have any official communication. I, I, I know that ex, uh, what is it called? Ex parte?
Ex, ex parte is one, yeah.
Communication with the consignment team and suggest these things to them that this is what's happening. And if either one of them has a problem with it, we can, at least that's, that's my suggestion. To then accommodate for the twenty-one days so that they can, uh, submit relevant evidence. Is our, my focus is more on getting to the bottom of what's going on here rather than just being on a technicality, um.
Is there some way we can waive that for special circumstances?
The, it's our internal procedure.
And, and let them know, um, but tell them that they need to, if there is any evidence that hasn't already been given to us, it needs to be given to us at least a week ahead of time. This isn't normal procedure, but because, you know, we may have, um, not told you that there were these rules of procedure, then, you know.
I wouldn't say that we didn't tell them, but that maybe they weren't.
Unaware, right.
So, I mean, it, as Tina said, it, it is, it is there and we're really only supposed to be looking at the information.
Commissioner Rice, hands your hand up. Sorry.
Miss Rice.
Yes. Um, something I can say. We decided to move this sooner than later because of the changes of, uh, commissioners.
Right.
That was one reason. So that's what, that was the circumstance. And possibly we could, um, you know, contact both, uh, parties to let them know under circumstances that, you know, we would at least, like, like Commissioner, um, Walden said, a week to review, uh, any documents, photographs, exhibits, et cetera. But maybe in the future, we might wanna consider, I don't know, this is, when we do give someone the letter that there will be a hearing, that they get a copy of this.
Yes.
That's all. Thanks.
Good idea.
I, I, I want to put this out there that I want the consistency to be at the, the front end. If we can be consistent with our expectations and their understanding, someone who on either side understood the twenty-one day, um, evidence criteria and would see it as us making an exception for something to be changed. I, I, I think this is a difficult, uh, part to consider on that and that we're changing the rules and it's going to benefit, uh, one side over the other, or whatever their interpretation of what that move might be. I, I, I want that to be floated out there as, as a consideration as well. And, and I don't know if you have any relevant, uh, comments, Mr. Cosentino, that you'd like to add on this discussion?
I don't know if I have any comments. I, I was looking at the attendees who are, who are watching the meeting right now. Uh, and, uh, there's one that's a, a phone number. I don't know who that is.
Hmm.
I know who that is. We're okay.
It's not Mr. Buckley, is it?
No, it is not.
Alright, I just wanna make sure, so, okay.
Alright. And, and, and as far as maybe, um, the precedence for changing our, um, hearing procedure for this particular case and making the exception for the evidence requirement. Uh, what do you think, uh, of that? As, uh, as a practice for this commission, what do you think that we could do something like that, uh, on the grounds of? Anybody who'd like to answer that question, really?
I have a problem with changing rules in this string. I believe that these people get the notification of what they need to do. They have been notified and, and sent to them an email. They have access to the city website. The procedure is there. It's up to them to take the responsibility to ensure that they get the information into this commission that this commission needs. We can't continue to hold these people's hands and expect to, you know, walk them through this process to a certain extent. These are adults. These people gotta be, they have a procedure to follow. We have a procedure to follow. They need to follow it. It's just that simple, guys.
Okay. Should they have reached out to us with any questions?
They should have. If they weren't, had any questions, they could have very easily contacted your office. They could have contacted the city's website. They have a ton of information out there for them to gain, all the necessary information they need.
I think it might be a bit of an unreasonable expectation to know what's relevant, especially given the, uh, the structure of the website that we've talked about before, uh, in getting information about the, the ethics of your commission. I think our ultimate goal in this is not to, uh, like I said before, be political, be, uh, gossip-based, be anything other than just trying to, uh, see the ethics of our city and, and, and address ethical issues. And I think it is more important in this case to get to the bottom and get the information that's relevant than it would be to just arbitrarily, not arbitrarily, I, I understand, but to just hold the date and, and say that a reach is just a known or, or that it is more important that we just keep this date than it is to say, I, I, we can't push it out a month. I, I think that is plenty reasonable to do. Uh, it might be a consideration with, uh, different mission members, but I, I want this to be, uh, as on the up and up and as relevant and as up to date with the evidence and both sides are agreeing that this is a fair, uh, shape. I, I don't want that to be a consideration in anybody's mind, that anybody's getting unfairly treated on this.
And they have a right, they have a right attorney. They can hire an attorney if they, if they have questions as to whether or not they're being treated fair. That's an option. It, it's up to them also to seek that, that legal advice.
Commissioner Rice, that's our handle.
Yes, sorry to keep butting in. It's just a thought I have. So we have requested some witnesses. And have we not requested physical evidence? Did we ask for emails, et cetera? That may not be part of what we've received already, correct?
It, yes, but there's a different procedure for us as far as our requests is.
It says it has to go to either part, both, uh, has to go to all parties and the Ethics Commission. So we're an exception of what the Ethics Commission wants to have as a document or evidence. Um, I'm just looking, it, it's kind of vague. We need to ensure that both sides have the evidence twenty-one days. What, what, where to find more email?
Twenty-one days is February twenty-sixth.
It's just a thought.
Mr. Cosentino, would that be a reasonable interpretation of our rules of procedure? That we would not be able to even ask for the, um, the information that we're looking for because it could not be submitted within the twenty-one days as far as our hearing is at this place right now?
I think I answered that same question, uh, maybe it was posed differently at the beginning of the discussion tonight about that first, that first sentence there. Then, uh, because of the way that it's worded, and I didn't write these, but, uh, we all adopted them, uh, must be submitted twenty-one days before a hearing to all parties and to the Ethics Review Commission. So in context, i- it, it appears to me that, that, that's binding on the, the, the parties that, uh, and, but it, it wouldn't be a constraint on the commission itself as the requister.
Good.
That's how I answered it the first time that I thought a question similar to that was posed, but maybe I wasn't clear or?
Yes, I, I, I think it's just on our end. I think it's our, we're totally in a different mind space right now, but it came back full circle and here we are. And I think that is a reasonable interpretation of that, that sentence, and I thank you very much for that. Um, so yeah. I wanna get a feel for each commissioner. Uh, go ahead. Commissioner Walden?
Thank you. That, I know we're concerned about this being fair and equitable. Um, Commissioner Taylor, I do agree with your feedback that, you know, these are adults. This is not somebody that we need to show them how to fill out the complaint. This is something that the complaint has been done correctly. We've already made that, you know, interpretation and that decision. And I don't know about you, but if I had an, an ethics complaint being brought up against me, again, not being on the Ethics Commission, but yet whatever, I would be looking at the rules and the procedures and, you know, particularly if I was a city employee or if I was, you know, on the, on some commission. Um, I would be finding out what I could and couldn't do immediately upon being told if there was a complaint against me. So this isn't just our regular citizen. This is somebody who has volunteered or is an employee, has gone through the ethics training. They should know this stuff. And if they weren't sure, they should have immediately called. So, um, I agree with, even though I brought it up about, okay, are you sure we can do this? I'm, I do agree with Commissioner Taylor that this date needs to stay the same. I think if they were worried about it, then they would have looked at it.
Okay.
So is, am I? Care about that? Was that a reiteration of what you were thinking? I'm sorry.
No, 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 it's no problem. I, 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 uh, am actually in the opposite camp as, as far as, uh, Commissioner Taylor and, and yourself goes. I, I, I think, at least to me, it's more important to just, um, get the information that we need, uh, make sure everything's there that we're, uh, we're checking. I don't think we're necessarily holding their hands by informing them of something that they, uh, I, I'm, I'm trying myself to find, uh, through Google to, uh, to find, um, that would help in making sure that this hearing is, is just goes better. I think the hearing is the most important part. The information that you receive is the most important, and getting to the bottom of, of, of this complaint is the most important part. And if that helps just by moving it by a month, I, I'm all for it, you know. But there's, there's gonna be.
That we were concerned that they were not gonna have the same permission?
Yes, that is, that is definitely concern, and I'm not sure that, that, I, I, I don't know. You know, I can't balance whether that's, uh, the same weight in consideration, that the people who are now agreeing to go to hearing are, are gonna be the same, of the same mind as these next commissioners.
Right.
Um, I wanna go down with the other commissioners, uh, one by one, just to get their take on at least this, uh, so we can kind of hurry the discussion a little bit. Commissioner Rice, what is your, your opinion as far as, uh, this goes, whether to move or to stay on the, uh, the date for the hearing?
Well, um, since, since we've been advised that evidence and witnesses for twenty-one days does not apply to us, I say we keep with our date.
Uh, Commissioner Tina?
Yeah, I, um, I agree that, um, Mr. Buckley is not just some poor soul off the street who has no idea of the workings within the, you know, the municipal government and should have had some, uh, snap that would enable him to at least start trying to find out. And I, I think if you start asking people, it's probably not all that difficult to finally find what you need, um, within the system. And pushing it off and pushing it off, I don't know. Like, we're gonna have to go through all of this again with the new commissioners. So I don't know. I think we should just stick with the date that we've got and see what happens on the eleventh.
Okay. It appears to be the will of the commission. I think we should definitely go full, full forward then. Um, as far as our witnesses and requested documents, at least my understanding, we have uh, a Jamie Lee, Jade Huffman, and the wording for the documents that we're requesting is understood by our own Mrs. Moreno, correct?
Yes, and then the Rusty Bryce and Drew Wells were added to the witnesses.
And those are ones that we wanna call as the commission or that you're just calling us to the emails that, and it's, that's.
Sorry, the other two were, were from, uh, not from the commission, but sorry.
Mr. Locke.
Right.
Yeah, those are on his list.
Would we want to add them to our list as well?
No.
I, I think the two relevant witnesses in my mind were those two, uh, and if anybody else had any other thing in mind, I think that actually might be closing out our, uh, our agenda item. If anybody else had any last items? Yes, Mr. Cosentino?
Just as, as a point of, I was gonna raise my hand.
Oh, yes, of course. Uh, sometime.
Now, now I've done the, so just as a point of clarification, uh, Ms. Moreno will be notifying all of the witnesses, whether requested by this commission or by Mr. Locke.
Right.
Because that's the process. And, and because there's been a timely request for production. So Mr. Locke has gotten his witness list in to us today. It's timely, and, and the commission has, has its list. Uh, there's one name on there that you haven't mentioned. And, um, and, and one, and I'm just trying to figure out who is the custodian, if you will, uh, of the video, the unredacted video of the September seventeenth, twenty-twenty Parks Board meeting. Um, so if the commission
Oh.
wants to view that video at your hearing in toto or at least the relevant portions, um, somebody's gotta produce it to play it. So it's not on your list. You haven't mentioned, uh, that you want that, that full video produced, uh, of the Parks Board meeting, uh, at least the portion that was relevant to the discussion that, you know, that is the subject of this complaint. So is that something you want produced?
I think it should be. I think it should be.
And who might that person be? Um, Commissioner Rice?
Why is there a, a redacted version and a regular version?
The, the, the redacted version, uh, is, as I understand it, does not include the name of the, of the person accused of being racist.
And why would they redact that?
Yeah, why?
Metaphorically, right? Why would they redact that?
Well, I, I'm just tell, I'm just answering your, your question, and so some of you have already indicated that you watched the video. Uh, so did you, you probably didn't hear a name mentioned.
Did not, right.
What did you hear when it came to the name?
It was sort of kind of, um, a garbled little piece. And, and, you know, so I thought.
And that occurred, that, did that occur more than once?
I think, it seems like that was only once, and then he was, it seemed like he was sort of reprimanded and told not to mention any names.
Who, who was reprimanded not to?
Mr. Buckley.
Okay. Okay.
But, but, so it, I mean, it seems to me if, if, that, that, that you might want to have the video of the meeting as part of your, of the documents that you're able to review, right? So I'm just putting it out there, yes or no? You can decide it or not.
None of that.
Would uh have the video?
In its totality, unredacted. I agree.
Right.
Um, I don't think anybody else, does anybody else have any uh o- oppositions to that idea?
It's informative, but it's two hours long.
Well, the agenda item that, the agenda item that, that, that uh triggered the comments was a specific, it was a specific agenda.
It was, and it comes up twice, and I, and actually I wrote down the time when it reappeared after it was initially brought up. So it could be cut and pasted, I guess, or spliced rather.
Can they do that? Can they do the unredacted version sp- oh my god, sp- sp- I can't say that word.
Specifically.
Thank you. I, tongue tied totally um to like, Mr. Cosentino, like you were stating.
You got the message there, somebody?
Yeah, it was, it was, it was specific to the agenda item. We don't have to get the entire unredacted video, right?
That, the entire video, don't seem to be important, but what is important is that part of the video that pertains to the questions we have.
Right. And just so it's not on, you know, I don't want to hear the redacted. I want to be able to hear what Officer Locke and what the other people.
Exactly.
Publicly there.
Exactly.
To meeting their work.
Tina, did you see another message pop up?
Got it. Thank you.
Oh, okay.
It, I saw it, and, and it was a request by uh Mr. Locke that Lucia Cordova be added to the list.
And who is she?
She is uh employed by the City Clerk's Office and shares responsibilities with Ms. Liz Trevino to handle uh responses to Public Information Act requests that the city receives.
Okay, so she's the custodian, basically, right?
Uh, right. She would have been involved in responding to any request from Mr. Buckley for records.
Okay.
Do, do we know who the video custodian is? Or do we, do?
I, I have a legal sense who the custodian is, but I think if you, if you asked either Ms. Cordova or Ms., Ms. Case to make that video available, I think it would be done.
Okay. We'll have to make sure that gets requested then, to them.
Is it that you have so far, uh Mrs. Moreno, as far as our uh potential requests for evidence?
Um, I have the witnesses Jade Huffman, Jamie Lee Case, and then uh Mr. Locke has asked us to include Rusty Grace, Drew Wells, Lucia Cordova. And then um just now the unredacted video. And um the response given to Buckley on the open records request, um, what he was supplied.
Prior to the September seventeenth, twenty-twenty Parks Board meeting.
Right.
Right.
So that would be our uh potential motion, I think, for the request for her evidence and, and witnesses. If there is anything else that anyone would like to add, uh shout or things, let me know. Okay, uh, the chair will entertain a motion to uh get this list out. If anybody would like to.
Um, I'll go ahead and react. I'm sorry?
If there's a, a way to state it, it might just be uh, the commission would like to call forth these witnesses to be at the hearing um as well as call upon the city to provide this documentation and this this is just me speculating as to a motion. I wouldn't possibly actually do a motion.
Mr. Cosentino, your hand's up still? Yes, no? Thank you.
Picking up the hands, Mrs. Moreno.
I'm trying.
Commissioner Rice.
I have her up now.
Thank you.
Hey, I'd like to make a motion um that we um request Ms. Moreno to um reach out and request the, the people that we listed just a minute ago, um attend the hearing along with the um clips of the unredacted part pertaining of, of the Parks meeting in, per the complaint with the evidence of um what was said. And um the emails that we requested, correct? I think so.
The documents.
The documents mentioned per our list of requested things. From the document.
I, I believe it was stated earlier, the documents that Jordan Buckley received pursuant to his Public Information Act requests prior to the Parks Board meeting of September seventeenth, twenty-twenty.
Correct.
We'll say you said that.
Exactly what I want to say.
Relevant.
Have a motion.
We have any motions, uh, as it's understood?
I'm stuck in the motion.
Uh, stuck in the motion, and if you could, uh, Mrs. Moreno, just restate the motion so we make sure we got it all.
Oh.
All right. We have a motion in a second. As it's understood, I just want to make sure it's all down. Uh, all those.
I have it. I have it. And I have it for you to listen to.
You have it? All right. All right.
Well, for, for, for the record, do you want me to try?
Yes, that would be lovely.
Yes.
Because I understand the motion is that the recording secretary, Ms. Moreno, should uh, should notify the following witnesses to attend the hearing. Drew Wells, Jade, the Case, Jade Huffman, Rusty Grace, uh, and Lucia Cordova. And that the city produce the following documents. One, the unredacted video of all portions of the September seventeenth, twenty-twenty Parks Board meeting where the uh comments and statements relevant to this complaint were discussed. And also produce all documents that Jordan Buckley received pursuant to his Public Information Act requests prior to the September seventeenth, twenty-twenty Parks Board meeting.
Yes, ain't expecting the job.
You're good. Yep. I, I believe we wanted to leave out the people that um we didn't uh actually request as witnesses. We only had two witnesses, I believe, that we were specifically requesting. And the others were, were suggestions from uh the complainants.
Yeah, but Tina has to, Tina has to notify, I don't know.
Right.
But, they're not, this, it's not the same as us calling them as witnesses, as we discussed before with the the changes to the ordinance, the potential changes to the ordinance. You can catch my meaning with the city employees being compelled to be at the hearing, us calling fewer witnesses means less of them being compelled.
If, you could, just if I could clarify, it, it, there's nothing that prohibits the commission from including uh those witnesses in, in your motion.
Right. And I was wondering if we wanted to do that.
There's transparencies.
Okay.
Okay.
If no one has any complaints about that, I think we'll move forward that motion, at least as far as this motion in a second. All those in favor of this motion, as it's understood, please say aye.
Aye.
Uh, all those opposed, please say nay. The motion carries. And I believe, unless there's anything else that brings us to the end of our agenda item. Our next agenda item being discussion recommendation, discussion and recommendation for future agenda items. Uh, when is our next regular meeting?
March. Sorry, I have to look at the timeline.
March is denied.
Okay.
That is correct.
Uh, does anybody have any ideas for what they want on the uh, the agenda item for March?
If you look at the draft minutes, it has a couple of items, I think, that you mentioned at the last meeting.
Well, we definitely would want to talk about what the status of our resolutions are. Cause that, the first, second, and the fir-, the meeting's in February and maybe the meeting in March, so.
Well, if there's nothing else.
Well, what about the uh informational video? Regardless of that you were gonna be doing.
Yeah, it's on there. It's there. I didn't make it up. It's there. I see it too.
Oh, you guys remember that? All right. So my video editing skills are not the greatest. Uh, I was in contract, need some help. I, I, I want to make this uh a good video. So um, yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna try and, not contract, but like just get a buddy of mine to help me get it together. And, and then I'll, I'll, I think I'm gonna email it to you guys to see how you react to it, see what you like.
Okay. You're gonna constrict somebody.
Right, right, right. For the, for the service of the city, please do video editing for me.
I have a question.
Yes, there you go.
Um, do you want to conclude, just based off of the discussion you had tonight? Anything or discussion on your rules of procedure for hearings you need had added for any reason?
Thank you so much, Mrs. Moreno. That is a very relevant topic, and I think uh that might be a good topic of discussion for our March meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah, we could probably do some tweaking.
And cleaning up.
Yeah.
Yeah. So that is it. Thank you, Tina.
And then that meeting should have your new members as well.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, cool.
If there's nothing further, I think we are good to move on to our last agenda item, adjournments. The chair will entertain the motion, adjourn.
I'm motioning adjourn.
Commissioner Tia has the motion. Do we have a second? We have a second, Commissioner Taylor. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. Motion carries. This meeting stays adjourned. Thank you very much, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye.
You guys have a good night.
Y'all too.
Me too.
All right.
I'll be stopping the recording.